Can I get a sound test from someone because I don't hear any sound?
Hi, everyone. Hey Cindy, last meeting, I don't think you were muted most of the meeting and so we were catching a lot of background noise. So before you talk, maybe you just keep it on mute. Of course, I'll recognize you and give you as much time as you want.
Good evening, Ms. Cheryl. Am I coming through?
Yes, you are. Good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Chat with you soon.
Alrighty.
How's everything going ahead of the election?
Oh, it's a little crazy this year.
I'd imagine you must be expecting a ton of people.
We are. Yes, definitely.
Even without the state sending everybody an application and yeah.
Yeah, the state not only did they send an application to everybody, which I don't have a problem with, but they told them to email, take a picture and email their application back. Yeah, so we had to print every everyone out, of course, and then we have to enter it into the computer and print out like, well, it's just causing more work, but I mean, we all get through it.
Yeah. Well, that's right. I listen, be sure you count every vote.
Oh, absolutely.
Especially in that treasure thing, you know?
Right.
All right, that won't bug you. You got work to do there.
Thanks.
I will get started in a couple of minutes. Just be mindful that people are joining the meeting already. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:30 PM, so let's begin this meeting. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular city council meeting of June 8th, 2020. The time is 7:30 PM. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Yes, Councilman Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Sorry.
Clark?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Mayor Proton Grass team?
I'm here.
Councilor Rorback?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. Welcome, everyone, to our meeting. We're including our opening ceremonies again, so if you'd please pause a moment for an invocation to be led by City Councilor Emily Rorback. Emily, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a very unusual time in our in our lives for so many reasons, but in this particular week, I am reminded of the words of Maya Angelou when she said, "History, despite its rich and pain, cannot be unlived, and if faced with courage, need not be lived again." So this is my invocation for today is that we are one human family and endowed and each person is great dignity. May we overcome the evil of racism. May we find grace in eliminating this blight from our hearts, our communities, our social and civil institutions. Fill our hearts with love for our neighbor so that we may work in healing our communities from racial injustice. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a beautiful moment. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance now. So if you'd please join me at home by rising. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay, thank you. We can continue on. Items on the agenda of interest to parties in the audience? Anything that should be brought forward right now? Okay, we'll do meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to address any subject to city council. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less to be respectful. Direct your comments to me as the chair of this meeting. And please, if you will, identify yourself by name, address, and any professional affiliation. So the meeting is open to the public. Who would like to speak first?
Mr. Hartwell.
Yes, who is asked to be recognized?
This is Cindy Holder.
Welcome, Cindy. Thanks for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. First one is say I've never done a Zoom meeting, so I tried last time and wasn't able to stay connected. So I have a couple of concerns, obviously, about the marijuana issue that's coming up. I have, first, I want to preface that in the past, I had said as far as the political campaign contributions that Mr. Bliss had been, I had not seen any that he had been given. I do need to correct that. I do have two of them. So the only one who hasn't received any contribution money is Mr. Soltis, so I want to make that clear from the start. Secondly, I'm concerned, I want to know where and when the public had any input into adding recreational marijuana sales. I absolutely and fully contend that each and every one of you that received contributions have indeed been influenced by that campaign money. I know you disagree with me. I would challenge that. I would also say, because Mr. Leader was one of the ones that spoke before, and he was one of the biggest campaign contribution people. But in the fact that the two companies that got the medical marijuana site got exactly what they bought, they got medical marijuana sites. If indeed the city is going to do this and they're going to stay impartial and you have the votes to do this, you need to start from scratch and rebid it. If this is only for money for the city, you need to start that process and make it fair all over again, especially unto the fact that six of the seven of you received campaign contributions from the medical marijuana companies. And I challenge the fairness of that. And if indeed this is only being done for the goodness of this city, for a financial gain of the city, then you need to rebid all three of these recreational marijuana adult use licenses. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holder. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? All subjects are open.
I would.
Yes, is that Amy? What's your last name?
You're in. I live on 92 Lorenz. Sorry, this is the first time I'm doing this.
Welcome. Relax. You're fine.
It's okay. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the allowing recreational marijuana license to the city of Madison Heights. You know, during this time, you would think that that would actually help the city financially. And we don't have to go out to Detroit or whatnot. It's just, it's, it's, you know, I think it's necessary. I mean, we all voted yes, not all of us, but most of us voted yes. And, you know, accepting it, and if we have one in Madison Heights, you know, it probably will help us economically. So that's all I have to say about it.
I'm thinking for your comments. Would anyone else like to address city council? Any subject?
Hi, this is Rob Dieter. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. Could you please repeat your name?
Rob Dieter.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, yes, Rob. We see you. We see your screen. The floor is yours, Mr. Dieter.
Thank you. Oh, that's weird. My video is not working. But I'm actually wanting to attend to actually also voice my support for the recreational license. You know, we've gone through quite a lot in the past number of years to kind of de-stigmatize the whole recreational use. I mean, for God's sakes, during the pandemic, you know, marijuana was considered a essential business. So, you know, if we if we start going back and taking a look at a lot of the states and a lot of areas that have, you know, legalized legalized recreation and they, you know, tax the living daylights out of it. I think we can see that it's actually helped pretty much every community that's been brought into. And I think that doing this in Madison Heights will also help our, you know, help our tax base, honestly. You know, a lot of the the previous stigma really needs to needs to go away. You know, there's, there's been a whole lot of studies that proved that recreational usage, you know, while not necessarily healthy, it's not like eating kale every day. But, you know, it's definitely better for you than, you know, drinking. So, and I believe that a lot of the statistics on, you know, on domestic violence and all sorts of different things can can point to marijuana being much, much, I guess, less detrimental to the public than anything else. But, you know, I think the additional tax revenue will be a great thing. And I'm not even talking, you know, for myself. I don't even partake. I just think that this would be a very good, a good idea for the city.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Is that Andrew McGilvery?
Yep. Wanted to thank Mayor Council for the support for the parade this year. While we had to make the hard decision to cancel it, it was really nice to be able to do a virtual parade with the city's support with some new video clips. And for those that haven't seen it, we do have it available on YouTube. And it was also great to be able to, on the Saturday we would normally held the parade, we had the mayor join us. And we asked for our Gold Star Mother to be able to lay a wreath at the memorial to keep with our yearly tradition. It was a great, great thing to do, and she was very, very satisfied with being able to do that. Her family joined us at City Hall. Unbeknownst to her, she was a little surprised when we rounded the corner into the driveway. We actually had her crying when she got out of the car, seeing her whole family there. And it was nice to have the mayor with us. We did limit it just to a couple of us first to limit the gathering to stay under the governor's orders.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments? Andy?
No.
All right. Good evening, sir. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject?
My name is Tyler Hemmingson. I live over here on Shirley Avenue. I honestly, here, just for the same exact thing as Rob just stated, not to kind of backpedal the information that he just said, but if you look at the vast majority of the communities around us who do have recreational marijuana facilities, they are unbelievably well kept. Not only would they add increased tax revenue, you know, and honestly, better location for Madison Heights residents, but it would definitely add beautification around the city. I mean, even just to drive through Ferndale past their couple, and it's, I mean, it's some of the nicest looking facilities you've you've ever seen, not to mention safe. Just wanted to kind of throw my two cents in there and say, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Pat Shields, I think you asked to be recognized. I'd like to recognize you next because we we didn't get you last time. Ms. Shields, the floor is yours if you'd like to speak.
Am I? Can you hear me?
Yes, you're on, Pat. Welcome. Welcome back.
Okay. I've come before this city council more times than I can count, urging you not to take us down this dark path of marijuana. And now you have taken it upon yourself, when we are in a public health crisis from the virus and people are sequestered in their homes to introduce a proposal to legalize recreational marijuana for our city. How dare you? When you wanted a millage increase, you flooded the city with mail and meetings telling us how important that issue was, but have been very silent about this proposal. No letters, no notices. If you were going to pursue this issue. Well, recreational marijuana is just as important an issue, if not more important than the millage. Once it's here, it will never go away. This proposal should be voted down by this city council. And if you are really a city council with the best interest of the city in mind, put the issue of recreational marijuana on the November ballot and let the citizens of Madison Heights decide if we want it in our city. And please, don't use the excuse that the people voted for marijuana. They voted to legalize it for the state of Michigan. There was no verbiage in their proposal that said the people of Madison Heights wanted it in their city. You elected to bring it here. So if you are not in the pockets of the marijuana grooves because of money donated to your campaign, or have personal gains by allowing recreational marijuana in our city, or that you are so involved with the marijuana people that you are now afraid to cross them, I urge you to vote no on this proposal. The citizens of Madison Heights decide if recreational marijuana is good for our city. Let our voices be heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Shields. Would anyone else like to address city council?
I would, here.
Vaughn, I think you jumped in first. I see Mr. Genderson. I'll get you next. Vaughn, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. My name is Vaughn DeNarian. I'm a Madison Heights resident. I'm also the chair of the Oakland County Democratic Party, just for the sake of accuracy. I wanted to speak really quickly about medical marijuana as a concept and as it's moving towards execution in Madison Heights. Before my current occupation as a Democratic Party Chair, I was a bar owner for almost 20 years. Or as some people in the audience might frame it, I was in the recreational alcohol industry. And one thing that I learned in that industry is that there are good actors and bad actors across the board. And the the existence of bad actors or the possible existence of bad actors is not a justification for a setting of policy to prevent the existence of good actors. And I think that as a city, as I followed this, everything that has been done about the medical marijuana and recreational marijuana proposals in Madison Heights seems to have been done with the best interests of the city in mind. And I'm looking forward to the development. I'm looking forward to seeing what happens with the the city councilors and the mayor that we voted for. I have full trust in all of these elected officials, and I know that they're they're looking out for us. And they want to make sure that this is going to be done in a way that maintains the character of our city. I was lucky enough to move here in the early 2010s, I think, 2013, 2014. And when I moved here, it was a wonderful city. I was really happy to be able to put down roots here. And I'm excited to see all the developments that have come in since then. It's been wonderful to see how the BJ's opening up has affected the our ability to go and get groceries. And it's been wonderful to see a lot of the other businesses that have opened up, the, you know, the haunted house slash escape room. And then the incredible number of restaurants. This is the sort of thing that I think will really help to to make us a community with character. And yes, I understand that there are some risks with recreational marijuana. But the job of us as Madison Heights residents, the job of our elected officials is to make sure that when this is done, it's done in the best possible way to make sure that all of us can stay and enjoy the city that we love right now, but also see, find new ways for us to succeed as we move into the future. So again, thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time, Council. And I'm looking forward to hear what the other residents of Madison Heights have to say.
Thank you, sir. We welcome Josh Genderson, and then we'll do Gordy. I don't have your last name. Gordy, you're on deck, but first we'll have Josh Genderson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hartwell. So, you know, just to touch upon some of the things some of the other residents have mentioned. So I am the CEO of a company, one of the companies that has one of the medical licenses. And I actually come from the fourth generation of a wine and spirits business. So, you know, a recreational wine and spirits business. And when I got into medical cannabis, we were solely focused on medicine and and treating children with epilepsy was our first passion. And then that moved on to brain tumors and it's it's moved on and on and on as we've learned more and more about the plant as a medicine. And so, you know, I'd like to say that first and foremost, as somebody that runs a cannabis business, we, you know, that from the East Coast and from the Midwest, we were very hesitant to be involved in adult use. And what we learned was that there are many, many, many people that are either suffering from from mild things like lack of sleep or or back pain to way more severe things like muscle spasticity issues or cancer. And and there, there's a lot of trepidation about going and getting your name on a receipt, getting a card. And and we've seen that when when communities or cities or states allow adult use, it makes people more comfortable and creates more access. So. So, you know, I, I appreciate what everybody has to say. And I think that, I think that, that as people start to learn and understand a bit more about the plant and, and about some of the companies in the space and how much they care and are dedicated to the communities they operate in, it really does start to change people's opinions. So to that end, you know, we're really appreciative of the move to adult use for, for the existing medical licenses in this new ordinance. You know, our company for one, you know, we competed in the RFA process and, and we won. And we, we essentially committed about $30 million to this project. So, you know, it's, it's a big number. There, there's no bank loans in this industry. And so this, this money comes from, from, you know, people that have worked really hard and made investments that believe in us. And so I think doing this really, really allows us and enables us to compete, you know, with, with other companies and facilities and neighboring communities that have already adopted adult use or are close to doing so. It'll help us create more better jobs faster. And it'll allow us to have stronger outreach, you know, especially in the early years when people are trying to figure out, you know, what this is all about. We, you know, our company in particular, we won the, the license and, and, you know, barreled, barreled in headfirst. COVID has, has certainly presented some barriers, but we've, we've been able to maintain that. That schedule is close to, as close as possible. You know, we've donated to help an existing refunded mural project and donated for tree plantings in the city. Despite all the delays, we've delivered hand sanitizers to the city that we made in our facility, in some of our. You know, we, we took down the blighted bowling alley on Stevenson, got rid of all the asbestos. You know, due to office closures, thing, you know, COVID closures essentially. We have been held up on occasion, holding meetings, the required meetings to move forward, recite work. But we're moving forward. We've spent almost $3 million to date on the project with, like I said, another 27. And, and the delays have been birdish some, but, but, you know, the whole country's dealing with, with a lot right now.
Disrespect, but we try to limit it to three minutes just to provide some equality. Would you mind?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll hit the, I'll hit the final points real quick. Basically, this is a very large project for us and, and the amount of money that we were committing. You know, and given the, 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 the city's values and, and the loyalty that we felt when we, when we won the license and formed the partnership, we, you know, we respectfully ask that, that, you know, there's, there's a buffer period before there are more. There's another life added. Initially, there were only going to be two. So we wanted to really just make sure that with the amount of money spent and amount of, of time and energy put into the project, you know, that there would be some sort of buffer, three-year buffer to get built out, operational with the two existing sites. And, you know, I, I think that pretty much covers it. I think, I think the only other point is that one thing I didn't see was a buffer zone in between the sites. And, and that's, you know, pretty much common in every municipality that we operate in or have seen. And I think, I think that's just an important third. So anyway.
Thank you, sir. Let's see. I think Gordy, you are next in line. Gordy, are you prepared to speak? Could you please state your name?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Yeah, this is Gordon Davigan from Cadillac Straits Brewing Company. And I just wanted to bring up quickly, I've been told that you will be discussing, it looks like Agenda Item Three tonight, under the reports that you're considering a proposal that would provide a blanket wide waiver for bars and restaurants to better utilize outdoor space for seating and service, which mirrors a, a rule that the MLCC has passed, allowing similar temporary extension of, of service areas due to limited seating that we've had to go through because of COVID and the shutdown. And I just wanted to bring that up and request Council support the, the proposal.
Very good. Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
The next person who requested is Mike Bahora. Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to everybody. Let me congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, on your recent appointment to District Court in Hazel Park. Although we'll miss you at being the mayor in Madison Heights. I'm, I'm, I'm really happy that you got that appointment and I know you'll do a good job. And I look forward to working with the next mayor. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Josh from Holistic touched on. I think the City Attorney's Office did a really good job with this ordinance. I appreciate City Council. I know we weren't here too long ago and we were asking you to kind of help give us the tools to compete with neighboring towns like Ferndale and Hazel Park. And, you know, you guys did that really quick and we appreciate it. Hopefully if this passes. But, you know, you can't always say that about other municipalities, especially where I'm operating in some other cities. A lot of times we've got to beg and plead and kick and scream for months and months to get them to kind of listen to us. So I really appreciate that you guys tackled this issue pretty quick for us. And again, I, you know, I'm a little biased, of course, but I would say I'd echo Josh in saying that hopefully there's a little bit of a buffer period between when we're able to get open and, and when the third one in. We, we made a lot of promises to the city. We signed those contracts. We also donated to the tree planting and made commitments to, to another, another amount. But, you know, those, all those projections and numbers were based on two facilities. But, so if there's a little bit buffer period, that'd be great. But otherwise, I really do appreciate the city moving on this. And to the people, I know there's a vocal minority that are still anti-marijuana and I, and I can appreciate that those, those folks and who have a differing opinion from me, you know, but I would say, and I promise you marijuana was here long before I got here. And it's going to be here long after I, you know, I'm gone. And so this is a way for the city to get some tax revenues, increase property values, create good paying jobs. So it's a win-win, you know, and hopefully that we, we will be able to prove that to some of the people who still feel like this is, this is the wrong move for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Brandon, I think I saw Brandon first. Could you please give us your full name? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brandon Cherniski and I live on Edworth and I'm a Madison Heights resident. And I wanted to speak and thank Police Chief Cory Haynes. He had some words that a video that was on Facebook and I really appreciated what he said and made me proud to be a Madison Heights resident. And I hope that we can continue to feel proud of our city with published written police guidelines that are, reflect our values and continue to keep community involvement with our police force. So I wanted to thank Police Chief Haynes.
Thank you, sir, for speaking up. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
I think that's Colleen Porter.
Yeah, hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I just wanted to just let everyone know that the Madison Heights Food Pantry is still really needing volunteers. So if anyone is interested in volunteering for the Madison Heights Food Pantry, to please reach out to us. We have a Facebook page and our email as well. A wonderful thing that's been happening is that some of our regular volunteers have been going back to work. But we are still seeing, you know, a lot of people coming every Saturday in the times during the week. So we still need some volunteers and we would greatly appreciate if anyone in the city would consider helping out. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Oh, I see someone raised their hand and the screen says Dan Lee.
Yes.
Could you identify yourself?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Dan Lee. I'm Madison Heights resident. I live on Barrington. And just wanted to make a few brief comments on, I believe it's Item One under the reports. So just for some context, I'm a pastor. I know the Bible teaches love God with all your being, love your neighbors yourself. And obviously I agree that that's what I preach in my church. And I agree with the sentiment of the resolution about violent treatment. Understand the context of what's going on in our country that prompted such a statement. But I have some concerns about the wording of the rest of the resolution. And perhaps, and I don't know what it might indicate about the direction of future council decisions. I think we'd all agree that violent treatment is obviously a bad thing. I feel like disrespectful treatment, that phrasing is too vague. For one, who's it targeted at? Are we have in view police officers, citizens? What would be the nature of enforcing that if it translates into an ordinance down the road? And does it include things like speech? Regarding speech, I think hopefully we'd recognize that disagreement, a difference of opinion on something doesn't automatically mean hatred or disrespect toward another person. Certainly the tone that we present it in can affect how that's perceived. And then I guess one of my big concerns would be whether sincerely held religious beliefs are no longer allowed to be expressed in the context of a, a broad sweeping statement like is in the ordinance. And then kind of the last part would be with regard to any human life. I assume there's probably some differences of definition there. From my perspective, this would include the lives of those who are not yet born and, and, and all sorts of people. But I'm not sure where everyone else stands on that. And so in summary, I think that we should value all life, young and old, every race. We're all part of the human race. But I'm concerned about some of the lack of clarity in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor, for your comments. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Please speak up.
Yes, I would like to.
I think that's Mr. Molen Cup. Is that you?
Yes, it is.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live in, I've lived in Madison Heights for 26 years. And I find tonight to be a little bittersweet. I have to say that I've appreciated all the time working with you on volunteering. And I believe you're a perfect example of lead by example. And I really want to congratulate you, you know, on your appointment. And that's pretty much it.
You started, you started the waterworks. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Okay. We can continue on the agenda. Thank you for everyone's comments, by the way. Next order of business are communications.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, please.
I'm sorry. This is Lori Gerald's. I didn't realize I had a second mute button.
The floor is yours, Lori.
Thank you. 299 Sonia. To carry on Chris's sentiments, my mother Barbara Gerald's and I are so proud of you for achieving your goal to serve as the 43rd District Judge. While we know you will bring with you many strong qualities, which also benefited the city, your leadership will be missed and you're leaving very big shoes to fill. So thank you for everything and good luck.
Thank you. That's very kind of you. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Okay. Next order of business is Agenda Item C1. It's a resignation of myself, Mayor Brian Hartwell, and a declaration of vacancy. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report? I guess I could handle my own, my own resignation.
I think she was muted, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. I was talking away. I didn't realize I was muted. I won't make you handle your own resignation. On June the 3rd of 2020, Governor Whitmer announced her decision to appoint our mayor, Brian Hartwell, as the next District Court Judge for the 30, 43rd District Court Hazel Park Division. City Council is being requested to unanimously approve Mayor Hartwell's resignation from the Office of Mayor effective upon being sworn in as the District Court Judge, which is anticipated to be tomorrow, Tuesday, June the 9th of 2020.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish to City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett, please.
With deepest respect, I move that the council accept the resignation of Brian Hartwell as mayor of the city of Madison Heights, which will become effective at the time of his swearing in as District Court Judge for the 43rd District Court.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Your Honor.
I heard Mrs. Grafstein.
Support.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sherman?
The motion should also include declaring the mayor's seat vacant as part of the motion.
The maker agrees, Your Honor.
Support agrees.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. The points well taken. It's been moved and seconded to accept my resignation as the mayor of Madison Heights and declare the seat vacant. If you don't mind, I'll make some comments now. Just so in case those don't want to blast through the business portion of our meeting. So if Council, if you'd please indulge me for a moment. First, I want to thank my family. My parents, Ray and Diane Hartwell. My wife Ling Yu, my brother Sean Hartwell, my sister Kristen Hartwell, and my grandmother, Marjorie Dignard. And my deceased grandparents, who chose Madison Heights as our home. I really want to thank the voters who first trusted me by electing me to a seat on City Council back in 2007, when I was 25 years old. In 2007, former City Councilwoman Toni Shad retired. And I effectively, I won her open seat. And so I therefore owe Toni Shad a debt of gratitude. And my first term in public office was all about surviving the Great Recession, which became evident in my first year. My dreams of bringing new policies quickly were dashed by a focus on fiscal responsibility. Under the leadership of then-city manager John Austin, the city council saved the city of Madison Heights from bankruptcy. The cuts we made during the recession were difficult but necessary to preserve our institutions. We made mistakes, come to find out, but crisis demands assertive leadership. Remember during my first year on council, Gary McGilvery, who's now our county commissioner, he was my closest mentor. And Gary is one of our finest councilmen and mayors because he always spoke up for the residents and he challenged old habits at City Hall. It wasn't until Kyle Gerald's was elected to City Council, a couple of years in, that I truly had a partner on this board. Kyle Gerald's brought a positive and constructive energy that made us get on board with him or get out of his way. And with Kyle, we proposed and adopted as many policies as we could, encouraging our police to work closer with the community, tackling blight, collaborating with the schools. And of course Kyle and I co-authored the original Domestic Hen Ordinance. Kyle knew he would only serve one term and he challenged me, challenged all of us to serve with the same sense of urgency. My second term on council began in 2011 and the effects of the recession were still ravaging city budgets, our neighborhoods and families in the city. But then August 11th, 2014 changed everything for me and our city. That was the great flood, if you recall. And our city, we were just too slow to respond to the emergency of that rainstorm that year. We needed to declare a state of emergency sooner. We needed to be stronger against our neighbors who illegally dumped their waste in our backyard after the flood. And that rain event and our city's weak response galvanized my intention to seek the Office of Mayor a year later. My first term of mayor was 2015 to 17. And that's when the losses of the recession began to turn around. We saw a resurgence in property values, especially in the south of Madison Heights. And City Council's first action after I became mayor was to restore undercover police operations to fight crime and human trafficking in the hotels. And we should be proud of that. Also at my first meeting as mayor, we called for an investigation into the electric company to stop the constant power outages. Remember, it wasn't too long ago that the power would fail in Madison Heights every time someone sneezed. That was City Council that spoke up and fixed that. I'm also very proud of the City Council and the downtown board of updating its outdated downtown funding plan. And in the first couple of years of our downtown plan, we've seen dramatic results. And it's a shame that the coronavirus has muted that. that the coronavirus has muted that growth, but I know our commercial districts will bounce back. Uh, my second term as mayor, two thousand and seventeen and nineteen, brought a progressive majority to city council. And finally, we were in a position to promote new leadership in the city manager's office and the development department. Um, we hired city manager Melissa Marsh, and that was one of the best choices that I've ever been a part of. Uh, Melissa, your professional skills and your passion for community service match the councils and any residents. Uh, we really appreciate you. Um, my second term as mayor saw further growth in our city. We adopted several commercial development plans that brought record numbers to our city. New jobs for our residents, construction contracts for the skilled trade workers who live here and more shopping, dining and housing options. I mean, who would have thought we would have saw new heal hotels going up? The first BJ's wholesale in all of the state of Michigan. And two of the largest medical marijuana projects in state history and an affordable senior housing project in just a short time. Plus, we've had three consecutive years of having the best rated restaurant in all of Metro Detroit. All three are Asian themed menus, one six eight KTV Bistro, I'm a noodles and Lao Pot. Uh, we've become home to the region's summer Asian festival. And all of these things are because we're an inclusive and friendly city to all cultures and all people. Uh, some of the, the things I'm most proud of is we're not afraid to reform government. Um, this city council has led efforts to update and revise all our boards and commissions to bring new boards like the art board, the technology board to better fit twenty-first century people of Madison Heights. Uh, with leadership of Melissa Marsh, we brought a citizens academy. We're doing a master plan review and we've done thorough leadership changes in all departments of the city. The city council has also been very creative in financial solutions. We've used budget savings to fund mini grants for citizen boards. A major thing for our employees, we brought a health and wellness center for their health and productivity. And Melissa Marsh brought us strategic planning for budgets, and I thank council for embracing that policy. We've also been compassionate towards the people of our city. Solstice takes the bus to older Michiganian Day every day. We promote LGBT equality. We hosted a rally last weekend to demonstrate to our black brothers and sisters our commitment to their safety, equality and dignity. We provide free rent to the food pantry to help some of our neediest families who suffered unemployment and other losses during the coronavirus crisis. But I'm most going to remember the relationships, uh, we made. I haven't thanked our employees enough. I want to give a few special thank yous. Um, especially to the firefighters. Um, who've worked together so closely with me, who embraced me from day one as a mayor. And I really want to thank the firefighters for collaborating with me to raise awareness and funding every year for breast cancer research. I also want to thank our economic development team. Um, former supervisor Linda Williams, who took a job in the private sector. Barry Hicks and Giles Tucker, um, these employees I spend the most time with, bringing businesses to Madison Heights. It's where I spend most of my time outside of the city borders promoting Madison Heights. I'm also grateful to Mary Daly, who works in the city manager and for the city council. She responds to every citizen complaint. The mayor's not a full-time office. People think it is. Mary Daly is the one that operates the phones full-time, uh, to take care of our residents. I really want to thank you. And I also want to thank all the families who came through the doors of my law office and the pro bono clinic. Uh, we had at the senior center, who none of them could pay me a dime. Uh, but what they gave me, uh, was bore. I'm sorry. To build my character. They gave me more to build my character and appreciation of this city that I was born and raised in than I ever could have collected in fees. And I'm going to miss the day-to-day interactions with our public. The true purpose of what a city government does to provide for your health, safety, well-being, to send a police officer to your house when you're afraid, paramedic when you're sick. We deliver clean water to your family. And now we provide food to our poorest families. I'm going to miss being a part of that team. The secret formula to our success as city council members is that we take action when we see problems. We are lifeguards who run towards the drowning victim. We're never idle. And I feel strongly that the people who serve on this city council and mayor and those that'll come next, they need three essential qualities to serve in this city. One, the awareness to identify problems in our society. Two, the wisdom to understand the solutions. And three, the courage and the ability to execute plans. I feel strongly about another aspect of public service on the city council and that there is no room for cynics. Our council is disabled by cynicism. And I beg my colleagues on council, don't be distracted or delayed by cynics. Now, this isn't to say disregard criticism. As a matter of fact, the best advice I received during my first year in city council in two thousand and seven was to not be distracted by how someone from the public addresses city council. You know, they may shout at us, use coarse language, or even seem ill-prepared. Some people just aren't comfortable with public speaking, or they might be tired from a long day at work. A councilman back from the nineteen sixties, Dean Egger, he told me when I started, patiently listen to every speaker who comes before the city council. Don't be swayed or distracted by their emotions or appearance, but truly listen for the heart of their message. And this leads to my final point and what motivated me during my entire time in city hall. Mayor and city council, you have to be active outside of the four walls of city hall. And look and speak and act around unifying messages and policies. I believe the job of mayor is much more than these meetings. The next mayor must demonstrate a commitment to community service. Have the awareness and personality to relate and empathize with others. Have the conviction to move a paralyzed council forward on difficult issues and have the authority to deliver, deliver public messages that inspire and inform. It's someone who young people look up to and our elders trust to carry their banners. It's someone who personifies integrity, fairness, service and creativity. These principles have informed my career as an elected official and will continue as I assume the bench as the next district court judge. Service, empathy, leadership, trust and fairness. When the governor called me to appoint me as judge and I accepted, she said that she selected me over the other candidates for these simple values. A lifetime of elected leadership that demonstrates humility and service to others. I was born and raised in Madison Heights. I'll never leave. There's no better place to raise a family. God, there's no better place to raise a family or open a business than right here. Honest, hardworking, inclusive Madison Heights, Michigan, the city of progress. City council, you're not here to just pass budgets every year. You have to inspire other people through your good deeds and constantly look for ways to improve the lives of your neighbors. I'm going to take all of this to my new job in Hazel Park. May you find wisdom and strength in leading this city without me in front. I'm now behind each of you. My dear Madison Heights. I love you always. Thank you for letting me take that time. Are there any comments from city council on this issue?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Maybe you're going to want to take comments before, don't forget to take a, a roll call vote on the motion that's on the floor before we go to the next item.
Thanks. Comments from the council?
Uh, your honor.
Oh, yes, Mr. Bliss.
I, I am so incredibly proud of you. Um. You embody everything that Madison Heights is, although the great things that you talked about, uh, all of that entire life of public service. I know you're going to do an incredible job of taking that to the bench and serving our citizens in a new and exciting way. When I first got elected to council, gosh, seven years ago, yours was the first call that I received. And I don't know if you remember this, but the first thing that you said to me after the quick congratulations was, what can I help you accomplish first? And so when, when I went to tackle the, the technology committee ITAC, you know, it would, there were no other examples of that in the state of Michigan. It was kind of an outlandish idea. Um, there's no way I could have gotten that done without your help from day one. And that continued on. Uh, and so I appreciate your help and your mentorship. Uh, I know many other council members would echo the same sentiment. Uh, you helped us get a lot done. Uh, you took our creative ideas and helped support them and help nurture them. Uh, and helped enable us to be able to accomplish some really, really big things. The list of accomplishments that, that you listed since your time in office, I don't even think it scratches the surface. Uh, and that's because of your commitment to public service and your commitment to each and every individual person in Madison Heights. And I know that you're going to bring that to the court. Uh, it's just going to be, you're going to have a lot more people that you're going to be committed to. And so congratulations. I'm sad to see you go, but also really excited for you. Uh, and as soon as we can get out of this, uh, uh, full-on quarantine vibe, uh, let me buy you a drink and, uh, we'll, we'll celebrate properly then.
Thank you, sir. Uh. Any comments from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Clark, please.
I'm definitely not going to get through this without crying, so I apologize. Um, you're, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the, for the positive support of you and your family. And you were the one who told me that the word politician is not a dirty word. It's the person that someone elects to write the policies for the community. And you believed in me a hundred percent of the time. Around my whole campaign, you would call to make sure that I had everything I needed and give me positive support. But I didn't ever anticipate that I would be sitting on city council one day. If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be here. Congratulations to all of your success. We are leaving a big gaping hole in city council, but I know we'll fill it. We have a great community. We have a lot of wonderful people who are here to support us and make sure that, that we're successful. So thank you and congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments?
Your Honor.
Mayor Proton Grafstein?
I wish you much success. I wish you much luck. I think of the conversations you and I have had over the last ten years prior to my being on council and, uh, what prompted me to run when I initial, well, not when I initially ran, when I initially ran, I didn't get in. But you had some great comments back then. And, um, I thank you for all the advice that you gave me and, and the comment that you made, um, tonight about the role of mayor being outside of these, well, I'm in my basement, but outside of being in the four walls that we're usually in and hopefully we'll be back to and, um, uh, but it really, it really is. Um. Our job is not just to come to these meetings twice a month. It is not just to be at, uh, our boards or commissions that we're on. It's to speak to our residents. It's just to speak with our businesses. It's to find out firsthand what it is that they want, because we all live here. We are all residents. And there's a good chance that if there's an issue I have or my neighbors have, we all have that. There are many other people who have that. And when we promote our city, it's not just promoting it within. One of the best advice I got was from you, and I'm sorry, I have to share this also, uh, Margine Scott. Uh, when I started, both of you told me that I needed to go to the Michigan Municipal League and to SEMCOG, and I needed to educate myself, not just on what happens in the city, but how other cities work. And I needed to meet members of other councils. I needed to have them to rely on as well. And I appreciate so much that advice because it has given me the opportunity to bring other ideas in. And, you know, it, I get the opportunity to promote our city whenever I can. So I appreciate that advice and I wish you much luck, um, in your new role. And I do hope that at some point when we are back in those four walls and it is okay, that you will come to a meeting so that we can give you a proper send-off, I guess, a proper goodbye. Um, but I appreciate everything that, that you have done for the city and for me personally, I, I was not born and raised here. I chose to live here. And, um, I have always felt very welcome here and Mayor Swanson was the first person on council that I met. I believe you were the second and both of you. That was prior to you being mayor. Both of you made me feel so welcome. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Um, any other comments from city council?
Your honor?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Solstice, please.
Uh, your honor, um, congratulations. I, I, when I heard the news that you called, I, I, it was fantastic. Uh, you deserved it. You worked hard. Um, I just hope I'm not standing in front of you at your new job at some point, but, uh, but, but you know, you were the first one, uh, to call me. I was like a no name right in the city. And when I was running and you called and, uh, I think we met at that, uh, the coffee shop. And so you, you, you gave me advice, you know, you, you said if I needed anything to call you, and I certainly leaned on you for, you know, for your, um, your experience and your knowledge. Um, and then you were with me, uh, when we did the, um, at Buffalo, no, what was it? The Mongolian barbecue in Royal Oak. And we had to stay, we had to stand by that hot oven. We were tossing those, uh, blades around. Um, and you were with me at the first trip to Lansing and the bus broke down. You know, so we had to wait there for forty-five minutes before they came with another bus. Uh, so we had some really good times. Um, and I appreciate your leadership once you became mayor. And, uh, I'm, uh, I'm always grateful that, uh, um, that you were our mayor, mayor and, and that you're my friend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Emily Rorback, you spoke next.
I did. Um, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, you know, I think all of us here have had the experience of and, and been able to, to watch it happen, but the experience of you being a listener. Um, you know, a, a year or two, um, that we can bend to talk to and to ask for advice and it has been incredibly helpful to myself and everyone here. And I know as a judge, that is going to be an incredibly important, um, incredibly important feature for you. And I, I appreciate that you have honed that skill over the many years of, uh, service. And that's the other thing I want to say is that you are, um, a real public servant, like a true definition of a public servant. And I appreciate that so much because, you know, you're, you, you, you don't, I feel like you don't see yourself as a, like a leader, everybody follow me, but instead as a, um, a servant leader. And you're leading, you're helping to, to guide individuals and, 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 and help us with policy and things like that. But more than anything, it's about the service to the community that you love. And it's evident in everything that you do. And I appreciate it so much. And I appreciate the example that you've set for all of us um, to move forward. So thank you for your service and good luck in your new goal.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me make it unanimous and, uh, wish you, uh, wish you the best. Uh, this is the second time now that I've had to move to accept your resignation and it's getting a little old. There's only one other Bob in the city of Madison Heights who's going to be more interested in the fact that you just resigned, but that's another matter. Uh, best of luck to the court, uh, on the court you've, uh, I know this is something you've wanted. Um, you bring a unique and youthful. I have been saying for twenty years, it's getting it to be a disgustingly youthful appearance. As the years go by for me, the distance is getting longer. As the years go by for me, the distance is getting longer, but. Good luck on the court. It'll be, it'll be with no disrespect to the gentleman who currently sit, that'll be nice to see somebody. With a little less gray hair and much more hair in general, now that I've sufficiently screwed myself for the district court for the future. Hopefully I get assigned to you. Best of luck.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from council? All right. Oh, you know, one thing. Thank you, council. I hope you vote yes to approve this. It's planned that I will be, I will take the oath of office to be the judge at approximately 11:30 AM tomorrow. So technically I'll continue to serve as mayor until the minute I raise my hand and take the oath. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June 9th at 11:30 AM. So if you're wondering at home why I, I continue to finish this and chair this meeting. It's because my resignation is contingent upon taking the oath as judge. But thank you for all those heartfelt messages and I appreciate the people who've reached out to me. Before and. Thank you very much. Clerk, are you prepared to take a roll call vote?
Yes, I am.
Okay, if you support my resignation and declaring the seat vacant, your answer will be I or yes. If you oppose. Your answer would be no. Clerk, you can take the vote now.
Councilman Clark. Councilman Clark?
Yes, sorry, it's repeating on me.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portam Grassing. Mayor Portam Grassing?
Yes, sorry, I'm mute. Yes.
Counselor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be reports. We have four this evening. Agenda item D1, it's from the city manager. It's entitled, "The Resolution Condemning Violent and Disrespectful Treatment Toward Any Human Life." Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
The city council is scheduled to approve a resolution committing that the city. Committing to the city that violent and disrespectful treatment toward any human life will not be tolerated in Madison Heights. And I'm going to read that resolution. Whereas on May the 25th, 2020, George Floyd, Floyd, an African American man died at the hands of. Four Minneapolis, Minnesota police officers. And whereas this unprovoked and intentional act of violence represents a complete disregard for the dignity and sanctity of human life. And whereas the actions of these police officers do not represent the thousands of men and women that serve and protect their respective communities across the country. Or the Madison House Police Force who serve with the highest level of professionalism. But their actions impact the relationships between all citizens, communities and their police departments. And whereas this act of violence and other similar acts that have occurred across this country in recent years. Must serve as a call to action and the mobilization for a change to end systematic racism. And a call to every human being that recognizes life as both a gift and a human right. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Madison Heights, the following. City council, the city manager, Madison House Police Department and all city employees. Join with America in sharing its exhaustion, disbelief, sorrow and anger at these acts of violence and the underlying causes. City council hereby commits to our community that the city as an organization. Does not and will not tolerate nor accept in any way. The violent or disrespectful treatment of others that degrades dignity or disregard for human life. Furthermore, city council calls upon our community to join with us in committing ourselves as public servants and citizens. To take mindful steps to fight such actions of violence and disrespect by actively evaluating existing bias. Being non-tolerant of degrading comments and actions. Validating the experiences and feelings of people of color. And making your voice heard by voting in elections at the local, state and national level.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council regarding this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Clark.
I'm trying to go back up to the beginning of the resolution. I would like to make a motion that city council. Adopt this resolution condemning violence and disrespectful treatment toward any human life.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Is there support?
Your honor.
Yes, Mr. Soltes.
Support, please.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution. Is there discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Clark, please.
I will obviously be voting yes on this and while I accept that it is a great. Symbolic gesture of city council. I also think that there is a lot more work to be done to fill in the gaps that cause the systemic problems. That also causes racism, including providing food for families who don't have food, shelter for families who don't have shelter. And all of the areas of life that make it difficult to live as a human being, particularly. A human being of color. So I like that we're addressing this with this symbolic motion, but I would like to see city council move forward and providing more. Infrastructure for our city that will help more people from falling through the gaps.
Thank you. Other council comments? No other city council comments? I'm sorry. Is that a member of city council? All right, we can do roll call vote. Support this resolution, your answer will be I or yes. If you oppose, your answer will be no.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portam Grassing?
Yes.
Counselor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda, reports, D item two from the arts board. Second mural project is the Rosie's Park concession stand building. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. On February the 10th of 2020, city council approved the Rosie's Park concession building as the site for the second mural. Following the city council meeting, the board put out a call to artists and received proposals from four artists. With process ranging from 500 to $5,515. After much discussion and based upon the artwork presented. It will, as it relates specifically to the location, the board ultimately selected Madison House resident Jennifer Ramirez. To create our second mural in the Rosie's Park concession stand building. Approving her first option presented for a cost not to exceed $4,937. As council can see from the artwork by Mr. Miss Ramirez. She has created a vision of colorful geographic patterns as well as descriptions of wild animals that can be found in Rosie's Park. Her optional proposal, which would have included wooden cutouts of animals placed throughout the park. Was judged to be too tempting for vandals and while the board may look to erect these in the future, it would not take place for some time. Council will recall that Mrs. Ramirez was awarded the mural project at Civic Center Park. Where the power of imagination brings color and inspiration to residents and parkgoers. We want to take this opportunity to publicly recognize Holistic Industries for their very generous donation of $5,500. Which will fully fund the second mural project. As well as leave some funds available to pursue an additional mural project in the city. The arts board would like to thank all of the muralists for their time and effort during this process, which was slightly delayed due to COVID-19. The board would especially like to recognize board alternate Eve Sandoval. Whose amazing artwork made it a very challenging decision to make. The board intends to continue to work with Miss Sandoval to find a spot to proudly display her artwork. If the timing and location are appropriate and an agreement can be reached. The board will approach council if the building identified for our next mural is city owned. We would respectfully ask that council receive and file this report. And join the board in congratulating Jennifer Ramirez as she embarks upon creating the city's second mural. We're excited to work with her again and know that she'll be doing a fantastic job to bring this mural to life. And I apologize for getting a little distracted because I wanted to show what she's actually got planned and she is also on the Zoom if she. If council has any questions. So I think I can share the screen. I hope everybody can see that. So this is the east side of the building. Bear with me a second. This would be the south side. The north. And the west.
I'm sorry, were you waiting on me?
Yes.
What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss.
I move that we receive and file the report from the arts board for the Rosie's Park concession stand building mural.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Clark.
I support.
The move and seconded to adopt a proposal. Is there discussion from city council?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I just want to first and foremost highlight the artist. Jennifer Ramirez is an incredible artist and we are so, so excited and thankful that. She even submitted the application in the first place and we're really grateful to her for how thoughtful the artwork was. Leveraging the animals that you would actually find while walking in that park. And so phenomenal, hats off to her. Also hats off to the arts board. This, the arts board's only been around a couple of years and so it's a fairly new board and. To have been able to raise the funds for two murals. I mean, we're talking about $9,000. That was raised by this board through fundraising and through the generous donation for this mural from Holistic Industries. That to be able to come up with that, to be able to go through two full processes for calls to artists to pick those murals. And now we're going to execute our second mural in two years of existence. That's pretty awesome and I'm, I'm so proud to be a part of that team, so proud to. Work side by side with such amazing people who don't just sit on the board. But they take action and help us to move the community forward. And so I'm very thankful for them, very thankful for the artist. And very thankful for the donation from Holistic Industries. This is an incredible thing and I'm excited to get that first mural. On the south end of the city.
Thank you. Other council comments? All right, let's do a roll call vote. Oh, wait, I see Rosalind's waving the screen.
Sorry, I had to unmute there. I just, I just want to chime in here. So. In, in the fall, the arts board was up for an MML award and it was. Mrs. Ramirez, her mural in the park and I attended that. Laura Gerald, who is on Kim Clark, who was the, I think she was the chair at the time, Vita Palazzolo came down for it and they, they presented. They presented the city video. They'd done a little video for it. But I had so many people coming up to me and asking me about my mural. And I kept saying, I'm not on the arts board. I can't draw a stick figure, but they were so impressed with it and I had people asking and. A few weeks later, I had someone who contacted me because he wanted to get in touch with Mrs. Ramirez because he wanted to do something like that. In his city. So I just want to say hats off to Mrs. Ramirez and the arts board. You know, you haven't been around for a long time, but you are bringing so much to the community. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for that.
Other council comments before we vote?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to say, I'm not sure. I think Mrs. Ramirez has been also doing. Chalk paintings on the side of her fence. I'm right by Edmondson Elementary and I walk past that several times a week and it is just a joyful thing to, to do. So thank you, Mrs. Ramirez, for, for adding beauty into our city, not just on these murals, but you know, throughout. Throughout the neighborhoods, it's. It is contributing to a feeling of a place and making Madison Heights a special place that. It is, it's, it's a big deal and it's really important for us. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for. Adding more beauty into our city in every way that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments, please? All right, let's do a roll call vote. If you support the motion, your answer is I or yes. If you oppose, your answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Mayor Portam Grassing?
Yes.
Counselor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. The next report is agenda item D3 from the CED director. It's a resolution authorizing temporary waivers of certain zoning regulations to support businesses during COVID-19. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
In order to assist our businesses, including restaurants with the reopening and social distancing requirements. We are requesting that city council authorize the city manager to temporarily waive certain zoning ordinances. Specifically related to outdoor seating, signage and parking. We originally requested authorization through October the 4th. However, to be consistent with the Michigan liquor control changes, we request that this actually be through October the 31st. Specifically, this resolution will allow for bars, restaurants and retail to expand their outdoor dining area. And add an outdoor sales area to utilize up to 30% of the required parking in order to accommodate social distancing requirements. Inside their building. This resolutions will also serve as municipal permission to allow expanded outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages. For the purpose of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Authorization. This resolution will also allow for the temporary ability to post signage within certain parameters. Related to the hours of operation, pickup and delivery and specials. All fees related to these exceptions will be waived during this temporary period. Restaurants will also need to meet all of Oakland County Health Department requirements. Staff and I recommend city council approve this resolution temporarily granting the city manager authority to waive certain zoning ordinances. As described above through October 31st, 2020. And if council would indulge staff, I wanted to turn it over to Barry Hicks for a moment, just to summarize these because I know we have some business owners watching on Facebook. And participating in this Zoom event as well. So Barry, the floor is yours for.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. And before I walk through this, I know it probably isn't the best place to do it. I just wanted to say congratulations to the mayor and. Thank you for all your support and everything. Since I came on the staff a little over a year ago now, it's been great working with you and. I know we'll see you around Madison Heights. To kind of walk you guys through some of these things. So what we're allowing and what we're, what we're asking for in the resolution is allowing restaurants, bars and retailers to utilize about. 50% of their required parking as well as their privately owned sidewalks, not the public sidewalks. Outdoor seating or sales. Also some temporary signage would be allowed to increase. There's some guidelines about what that would be written in there. I also have a one pager that's kind of put together. We'll post up on the website tomorrow that business owners will be able to go get to have some of this information on there. And remember with those extra signs, the temporary signs we're allowing, they cannot go in the city right away and they cannot move. Like flags or some of the inflatable advertisements that kind of wave around. But we do, will allow some extra signage to advertise businesses. Some other regulations that I'd be aware of that may still apply. The Oakland County Health Department has their own regulations you may want to check out on Oakland County's website. Such as they're not allowing for outdoor kitchens or food preparation unless you have a specific permit to do something like that. Which a lot of places do not. So just be careful with that. Also, they do limit the exterior seating capacity of 50%. Of what is allowed within the building. So really, whatever your maximum occupancy load on the building is, 50% of that could be in the building. 50% could be outside the building and that's where they utilize some of that outdoor space. All fire codes and building codes do still apply. So to give you an example, if you do have outdoor seating and you have like an umbrella. You know, with your seating for some shade, that's fine. It doesn't require any kind of permit. you know, with your seating for some shade, that's fine. It doesn't require any kind of permit. But if you put up a tent that exceeds 120 square feet in size, that actually is under the building code and would require a building permit. We would only charge the absolute base level fee of $95 for that and nothing else. Also, under liquor licensing, you may, if you do have a liquor license, it's another thing you may want to check with the state on. They are allowing liquor licenses to serve outdoors. You may require some kind of special or temporary permit. You can get that information at www.michigan.gov/lara, L-A-R-A, which stands for the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. And you can check, or you can call the Michigan Liquor Control Commission at 866-813-0011. Like I said, this information will be available online through the city Madison Heights website. Also, you have to delineate the exterior space with a 36 inch barrier. Now, this Michigan Liquor Control Commission was not specific on the conference call that I was a part of. So it sounds like really anything from flower pots and planters to a rope or anything really just that delineates the space where the alcohol is being served and where isn't. So some of those things are just other things to be made aware of that may not necessarily be in this resolution from some outside agencies. And like I said, all this should be up on our website tomorrow along with posted on Facebook. That's all.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council on this matter?
Your honor.
I heard Mrs. Grabstein first, please.
Your honor, I move that we approve a resolution authorizing city manager to issue orders implementing, implementing temporary waivers of certain zoning regulations to support businesses during COVID-19.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution. Is there discussion from city council? All right, we can do a roll call vote. If you support the resolution, your vote is I or yes. If you oppose, your answer will be no. Clark, please, please take the vote.
Counselor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portman Grabstein?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The matter carries. The next item on the agenda is D four. It's a report from the city manager. It's the Michta Neighborhood Enhancement Grant for 2020. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report? Mrs. Marsh, we can't hear you.
Sorry. In February, we were notified that the city of Madison Heights is one of the awardees of the 2020 Michta Neighborhood Enhancement Program Grant. This grant focuses on home improvement and code compliance for households below the 120% area median income. As part of this grant, we were required to identify a specific neighborhood for focus of funding and efforts. With the assistance of code enforcement, we identified the area south of Lincoln and north of I-96. This grant was awarded for a total of $25,000, which was the maximum allocation and the area was approved by Michta. As a requirement of this grant, the city must commit $4,054 of implementation cost and eight neighborhood improvements for items such as trees, signage, sidewalk enhancements, gardens and parks improvements. We have submitted an additional grant application through the Michigan Arbor Day Tree Grant for 12 trees that would focus on the same area. In order to accept this grant and execute the grant agreement, city council is required to approve the grant agreement and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign all grant documents.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Clark.
I would like to make a motion to approve a MSHTA Neighborhood Enhancement Grant of 2020 and to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign all grant documents.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Rorback?
I support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this proposal. Is there discussion from city council? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. If you support the item, your answer is I or yes. If you oppose, your answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portman Grabstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. The next item on our agenda, it's page two. We have ordinances. There are three for tonight's consideration. The first is ordinance number 2154 prohibit the brandishing of firearms in the city on second reading. Mrs. Marsh, your report, please.
This ordinance amendment was requested by the police department to add a new criminal misdemeanor violation consistent with current state laws to prohibit the willfully and knowingly brandishing of firearms or pistols in public. The current ordinance only prohibits the brandishing of pneumatic guns. The proposed ordinance amendment adds firearms and pistols to this prohibition and includes additional language that is consistent with and mirrors state law. If council concurs, it would be approved upon second reading.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Clark.
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2154 to prohibit the brandishing of firearms in the city on second reading.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor. Support.
Saltus, thank you. Support. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2154 on second reading. Is there discussion from city council?
Your honor.
Oh, yes, Mr. Bliss.
Just really quick, I know when we discussed this at the last meeting, our city attorney compiled some case examples. Was hoping that they could just give a quick highlight of that, a quick overview for our residents who are watching at home, what some of those examples are and why this ordinance is necessary.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Hopefully councils had a chance to review my report. I tried to address everybody's questions or concerns raised at the last council meeting. So hopefully that report fully did that with regard to Councilman's Bliss, Bliss's question or, or concerns. We did provide some case law that basically talks about the state law equivalent of brandishing a firearm, comparing that to other, other things that I know council discussed the last time at the last meeting. Because I watched the, the discussion with regard to this. That brandishing is different. It fills, I think, an important gap between between more serious felonies such as felonious assault, where you would be pointing a firearm at a person as opposed to where you're brandishing a firearm, where you're not necessarily pointing it at a person, but willfully knowingly waving it about, displaying it in a threatening manner. So it fills, I think, an important gap. The case law in Michigan is clear that they've, it's not been overturned in the years that it's been in existence in Michigan. And it's a good gap filler for the city as opposed to going to the county for, for misdemeanor charges when this charge is appropriate. It's, it's kept as a local charge to better facilitate quick movement by the police in our office to prosecute these types of incidences where it's appropriate. As a matter of fact, the county prosecutor prefers us to do it that way if we can, where appropriate. And given the fact that the state law says we can do this and we've mirrored state law in that regard, thus the reason for the request or the proposed ordinance amendment.
Okay, thank you. Is there other discussion from city council? All right, we can do a roll call vote. If you support adoption of ordinance 2154, your answer will be I or yes. If you oppose, your answer is no. Will the clerk take the vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't say that.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portman Grabstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. The next item for consideration is ordinance number 2159 authorize a limited amount of adult use marijuana establishments. This is the first reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, city staff and assistant legal counsel were requested to draft a proposed ordinance amendment that would authorize and allow a limited number of adult use marijuana establishments in the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act as amended and the Marijuana Regulatory Agency Adult Use Marijuana Establishments Emergency Rules. The proposed adult use marijuana establishment ordinance is substantially similar to the existing medical marijuana facilities ordinance. Because the MRTMA and the administrative rules provide that a licensee can be simultaneously licensed for both medical marijuana facilities and adult use establishments, which can all be located in the same location. The proposed adult use marijuana establishment ordinance would authorize the two existing locations that have been approved for medical marijuana facilities to also include adult use marijuana establishments consisting of an adult use stacked Class C grower, processor and retailer to be vertically integrated at those same approved medical locations. This proposed amendment would also include the adding of one additional vertically integrated medical and adult use marijuana location in the city, identical to the two existing adult and medical marijuana uses. Thus, the proposed adult use marijuana establishment ordinance, if approved by council, would result in a total of three fully vertically integrated medical and adult use locations in the city, which would consist of the two already approved existing locations and one additional location that would have all co-located vertically integrated and stacked Class C grow operations at all three locations. The potential third location would not be added until sometime in the future upon an appropriate resolution by city council to implement a new application period. This proposed ordinance is supported by the fact that under state law, for the first two years, an MRA can only accept applications for adult use marijuana retailers, marijuana processors, Class B marijuana growers, Class C marijuana growers. Thus, only these entities that are already licensed for medical marijuana facilities can apply to the state for the first two years. Should the majority of city council desire to approve these proposed adult use marijuana established ordinance, then the appropriate action would be to adopt ordinance 2159 at the first reading and schedule a second reading for the proposed ordinance for June the 22nd, 2020.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2159 on first reading and schedule the second reading for the next meeting in June.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Rorback?
I support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2159 on first reading. Is there discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Rorback?
Um. My only concern about this is I've been thinking about this third location. I'm not convinced that we need a third location. I appreciate that it is upon a resolution from council sometime in the future. If we are to, to decide as a council that we want to open up that third location, we could, we could do that then. But the idea that my idea, my thought is that if we have, you know, we don't know yet what exactly the market is going to, to, to hold for this kind of business in this, this area. We're obviously not in a, in a box. You know, there are many other types of businesses like this in surrounding communities. And so, you know, I'm just, I don't know if the market will bear for a third location at this point, but time will tell. I just wanted to voice my opinion that, you know, I feel like we're, we're good with the two until we're able to, to establish that the market's going to bear that and they're going to be successful because, you know, I want, I want successful businesses in the city. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Are there other council comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Clark.
Um, early into this, I would have said the same thing as Emily. The two is probably enough that our city's not that big, but especially during the course of COVID, watching neighboring cities establishments with lines and waits like hours on end. I might argue that our city does actually have the space for more than two. I'm not sure that I would like to see more than three. We'll see how it goes, I guess. But I just know that there is a demand for it and I know that our city could benefit from it. My biggest concern though isn't really these recreational establishments. It's the caregiver establishments that seem to be taking up all of the available space that could be turned into mixed use space for small businesses in our downtown area. They make it look lighted and boarded up. And I think that it's problematic for our city. But in terms of these existing establishments, I think that the, there are going to be two Class A locations. I think I would like to see a third, but I would like to rein in some of the caregiver operations around town.
Thank you. Are there other council comments? Okay, I had just some brief comments. I think there's a place for additional licensees. The direction of the industry is to allow adult use. So, you know, just out of a sense of fairness, the original medical marijuana licensees should be converted. That's something that just has to happen or that investment will fail. And so I think as an initial matter, the initial medical licensees need to be allowed to convert to adult use. But I also feel that there's room in the market for additional licensees, but there has to be some sort of fairness here. The initial two licensees committed a great amount of resources and time to our city. And so I believe new resource, new licensees or new applicants should be held to some sort of similar standard. I'm not sure how to quantify that. That's for city council to figure out and staff to figure out over the next week and months. There has to be some sort of equity provision for new licensees to match or exceed the project scope. But I don't know how to balance the second principle I have, and this is, this will, I think, complicate the matter. But I really think there's great value in this industry for the people of Michigan and Madison Heights. And I would, I would like the profits of this industry to try to stay close to home. So if city council does go back to the drawing board with some sort of scorecard and application process, I'm not sure if that will be teased out at public meetings or it just happens through staff consultation. If the scorecard is rewritten, I think it should emphasize local connections. Men and women who have roots in the city, men and women who formerly owned businesses or land, men and women who currently own businesses and land. First of all, those are people who understand how city hall operates. They understand the values of our people and our residents, voters. So I would implore city council to consider locals first. I don't know how to quantify that, but please do that. And I also, I'm getting anxious. Madison Heights voters have been looking for sales of these products for a long time. And of course, with the statewide shutdown, there were construction delays and there's uncertainty in the market. So council needs to make a decision so everyone can move on and grow and sell. No pun intended on the word grow. But in the interim, before the businesses spend, you know, upwards of 20, 30 million dollars on their projects, I think they should be allowed to create. I think they should be allowed to create temporary locations to get sales going. There's market demand, there's political support, there's legal underpinnings to allow this. But whoever receives a license should be allowed to sell somewhere else in the green zone. Maybe they can rent a storefront in the green zone. It's already on turf that the city has deemed eligible as a possible location. But that will satisfy all those, all those reasons I just mentioned earlier. And then if there's anything I can do to help you on the other side of my career, I'll be happy to lend a nonpartisan voice to the effort. But those are my comments tonight. Thank you. Any other council comments?
Your honor?
Oh, Mr. Bliss, please.
Yeah, just, just really quick. I think the, the question that maybe some residents would be asking is, is why now? I think that in normal times, we probably would have taken a little bit more of a wait-and-see approach as Councilor Rorback was indicating, to be able to get our facilities up and running before we made any changes at all. But this isn't normal times. This is the new normal, as we keep being reminded. Our, our businesses are trying to open, some won't be able to reopen. We have some struggling businesses. We have thousands of residents out of work and we've had to deal with some budget challenges that haven't been seen since the Great Recession. And so that's where this proposal comes in for me. We have a lot of services that we need to continue, the high level of services that we provide to our residents. And this is kind of that break glass in case of emergency moment where if we have revenue that we can get without raising any taxes, this is that revenue. There's about a half a million dollars, our staff has estimated annually, that will go into the budget that will help us to employ the men and women of our workforce and help us to be delivering these essential services. And so I support the proposal as to when and if a third is needed. I tend to side with adding the third one because it is additional tax revenue for us. I don't think we need to seek anything more than that. But I do think that we need to balance when we do that in the application period. And so for the general public that's watching this, there will be a second vote on this ordinance itself at the next meeting, which I believe will still need to be through Zoom because the governor's order does prohibit indoor gatherings of ten people or more still. So we will be doing this again via Zoom. The public will have an opportunity to speak, as they did today, between readings. And obviously, the public can reach out to any one of us members on council, either via email or many of us are active on social media as well. Please reach out to us. Please give us your feedback. And then a third vote would happen sometime down the line. Should the ordinance be passed, that third vote would then take effect as a resolution of when we would want to open the period for the third. And that's also when we would take into account if there's going to be any changes in the scoring system. So that's the process. For those of you watching at home, please reach out. Please make your voice heard. We look forward to hearing.
Thank you. Are there other city council comments?
Your honor?
Ms. Grabstein, please.
Um, I just want to say that we do live in unique times. And when we look at the businesses in the city that have stayed open and the businesses that have closed, the businesses in the state that have stayed open and those that have closed, and cannabis operations actually were deemed essential. So municipalities that did have those businesses open and operating did keep the businesses open during this time. They are still, they are still operating. And so I think that this is a good time as well. I wanted to say, I'm, I think that we can see more businesses. I am, in theory, okay with a third one, but I don't know when that is. And I don't think we need a third one now when these two haven't even set up. My initial thought a year ago, year and a half ago, when we did this was, yes, we will probably move the medical into adult use and it is possible that we will open up another business. And I don't know what the number is. It might be two, it might be three, it might be four, five, six. I don't know what that number is. Our initial ordinance also allowed for transportation and for laboratory facilities in the city. There were, there were potentially fourteen locations and we have two. So I am okay having more. I don't know that I necessarily want fourteen of them. But I would like to, you know, to definitely take a wait-and-see for the third one. But I absolutely am in favor of rolling over the, the medical into the adult use at this time. Thank you.
Other council comments? All right, we'll do a roll call vote on this matter. If you're in favor of ordinance number twenty-one fifty-nine, your answer is aye or yes. If you oppose, your answer will be no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Mayor Potem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
No.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries five to two. The next item for consideration is ordinance number twenty-one sixty, to amend the number of allowed medical marijuana facilities on first reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, since council just approved ordinance twenty-one fifty-nine on first reading, there are two revisions that need to be made to the existing medical marijuana facilities ordinance. First, this proposed ordinance amends section seven dash three oh five D of the Code of Ordinances. This section establishes a set number of allowed medical marijuana facilities within the city that would have to be amended to change the number of allowed licenses for medical marijuana facilities to be consistent with the proposed number of adult use marijuana facilities. Thus, the proposed amendment in this section changes that number from two facilities to three facilities to match the proposed adult use established ordinance. In addition, section seven dash three oh eight C ten of the Code of Ordinances currently contains the community outreach provisions and scoring for an applicant's proposed planned outreach for educational services, charitable and therapy activity, community improvement, or educational programs, or other contributions that will directly benefit the city, city services, and residents. Based on our negotiated and executed community outreach agreements with the two currently approved medical marijuana locations, we are proposing a revision to the section so that it will reflect the same negotiated donations and community outreach for any new applicants. This is necessary to ensure the consistency with any new applications. Should a majority of city council desire to approve this proposed medical marijuana facilities ordinance amendment, the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance twenty-one sixty at first reading and schedule a second reading of the proposed ordinance for June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt ordinance twenty-one sixty on first reading and set the second reading for our next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number twenty-one sixty on first reading. Is there discussion from city council? Hearing no discussion, we can do a roll call vote. If you're, if you support adoption on first reading of ordinance number twenty-one sixty, your answer will be aye or yes. If you oppose, your answer will be no. The clerk, please now take the vote.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Mayor Potem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
No.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries five to two. That brings us to minutes. What's the wish of city council regarding the regular city council meeting minutes of five twenty-six twenty?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clark?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting. Sorry, I got lost on the.
Five twenty-six.
Yes, for five twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes as printed from the five twenty-six, two thousand and twenty regular city council meeting. Is there discussion on this matter? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. If you support adoption of the minutes, your answer is aye or yes. If you oppose, your answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Mayor Potem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. There's no further business before council. So before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments for members of city council and staff. If you don't mind, I'd still like to go in the same order as if we were assembled in person. So I invite Mr. Corbett. If you have any closing comments, please do so now.
Uh, nothing this evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor. Just a few things. First, I want to thank Mayor Potem Grabstein, Councilor Rorback, and our staff and volunteers for the tree planting over the weekend. Definitely didn't get enough recognition for the work that was put in. And that's a long time coming. I remember it being discussed initially on the environmental board after we had pushed the council grants out there from the budget savings. And I actually do believe this might be the first one to get implemented because COVID pushed every other thing back, but not this one. And, you know, props to all the, all the volunteers who, who were able to come out and plant those trees and social distance. And especially, thank you to Councilor Rorback and Mayor Potem Grabstein. Secondly, I want to thank everyone who is involved in the peaceful protest and prayer service on Saturday. Kevin Wright organized it. You know, also thank you to all of the other people who helped organize, all of the speakers, all of the people in attendance. I think it was a really powerful statement for the city. There were some protests in some other cities that didn't have quite the level of support from city officials, from the city staff. And to have a statement by our police chief, I think, says a lot about who we are as a city. And it made me really proud to live in and be a part of this community. I do agree with Councilwoman Clark. I think there are additional things that we can do. Honestly, I'm quite proud of where we're already at as a city. A lot of the things other cities are now looking to implement, we're already ahead of the curve and have already implemented. But there are always ways to stay ahead. And so what my proposal would be, I think we create a small three-to-five-person task force on racial relations and equity. I think that might be a great way to get a brain trust together to empower some new ideas, some new creative action that we can take in addition to all the things that we're already diving into. Finally, I have to end with talking about soon-to-be Judge Hartwell again. It was, it was interesting. We were talking in the comments. I think it was Mayor Potem Grabstein who talked about the embodiment of public service and that heart of a servant. And it, it got me thinking, gosh, back, I was probably ten years old doing community service in the city with the J C's with actually a couple of people I see on the screen right now. I got to meet a lot of our great leaders. Some of the people that were mentioned before, others that sit on the back wall of city hall, if we ever can get back in there. Mayor, will you? Absolutely are, are in that top tier. Your, your name is, is going to mean something in the city, not because of the work that you put in, not because of the, the policy that you helped accomplish, but because of the hearts that you touched, because of the relationships that you built, and because you helped inspire the next generation of leaders to follow behind you. I'm so thrilled and honored to have been able to serve with you. And honestly, I'm excited for us to dedicate that tree to you. I think there's still one tree left that's there that doesn't have a name on it. Really excited to see your name on that tree and for us to be able to have a ceremony. I mean, we could, we could be six feet apart. I'm okay with that if we can do it in the not-so-distant future. And as a reminiscent thing from, from our past, I will bring the lemonade in a cooler.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Rorback, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, I want to echo what Councilwoman Bliss just said. You know, the, the protests that we've had the last two weekends have been very powerful. They've been very meaningful to me. And I know to, to our many, many black residents, neighbors, and community members, it's important for anyone. It's important for everyone to stand up and say, I care about you. You are important and your life does matter. And so I just, I think it is so important for us, especially as elected, elected officials, to, to recognize that institutional racism is a thing and that we can be a part of making changes that are impactful and important for the people in this community and throughout the country and throughout the world. As, you know, I said at the beginning in my invocation, that history, despite its wrenching pain, cannot be unlived. You know, the, the wrenching pain of, and the sin of evil of slavery that we have inflicted upon this country that is, you know, four hundred years old. It was abolished about a hundred years ago or more than that. But we have so much work still to do because even with the abolition of slavery, the world has not treated people of color with respect and full, the full humanity that they deserve for far, far, far too long. So we need to face it with courage so that it will not happen anymore. That's my, that's my, my speech for today on that. I also want to say that, you know, my absentee ballot application arrived in the mail today and I'm excited to, to fill it out. So I will be getting my absentee ballots so that I will, you know, even when I'm busy on an election day, I can send in my ballot for the primary. And, you know, the, your vote matters. And I appreciate Councilwoman Clark for the work that she's doing right now to do some voter registration. And, you know, don't forget to vote drives that she's working on. I really appreciate that because, you know, voting is our superpower as Americans and we need to take the opportunity to vote in every election. And the thing I love about absentee ballots is I can take it home and especially those judges that you don't know anything about them. You can go and do some research before you mark who it is that you're going to vote for. So then I want to also say that, that tree planting, along with Relief Michigan and the folks in the neighborhood that came out to help plant trees right in front of their own homes and in front of their neighbors' homes. It was a hot, grimy morning and I enjoyed every minute of it. And I loved being able to spend the time with my neighbors and talk to people. And, and the, I've taken my kids a couple of times down the street. I've driven them down the street because I'm so excited about the change in the, the look of that street. And I just keep thinking about the beauty that it's going to, to have. Because these are not just, it's not just a street full of silver maples like we have in so many parts of our city. it's not just a street full of silver maples like we have in so many parts of our city. This is a street with bur oaks and red buds and tulip trees, and it is going to be miraculous and beautiful, and I'm so excited. And I'm really excited also about the idea that we have just approved this MISHDA grant that's going to help continue the progress of planting more trees in every part of our city because improving the quality of life for every single resident in our city includes beautifying and helping people have a beautiful place to live. And the more trees we have in a neighborhood, the lower the rates of crime, the healthier your community is, the healthier your area is, and the more successful your children are in the future. It's so important. It's not just a tree. It's a way of life. So I just want to say thank you to the city and everybody who is who's working towards that because it's beauty, bringing beauty back to our city is something very dear to my heart. So thank you. And that is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Rorback. Next, city attorney Larry Sherman, do you have any closing comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of my brother Jeff and Nick Rochowsky and the city attorney's office in general, I want to thank you for your service to the citizens of the city of Madison Heights and to all of us for the past thirteen years. What an honor it is for you personally and for your family for you to receive this appointment. We all know that nobody gets to this point in life without help from their family, their colleagues, their friends along the way. You mentioned that, you know, the qualities that you brought to the table as as councilman and as mayor of this city for many years were public service, empathy, leadership, trust, and fairness. All of the same qualities you mentioned, Brian, are the same qualities that make a great judge. It's an awesome responsibility to become a judge in the people's court. And your interaction with the public, your empathy, the leadership, you've demonstrated, your fairness is all going to serve you well in your new position. And I I know that you're up to the task. And after tonight, the next time I address you as Mr., as your honor, you'll probably be wearing a black robe and I'll be standing in front of you. But I, or maybe Nick, or maybe Jeff, but I just want you to know that our loss in Madison Heights is the, is an asset to the judiciary of the state of Michigan, and we wish you the best as you begin your judicial career. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Larry. Next, I invite any closing comments from our city manager, Melissa Marsh.
Yes, actually, I have several things if council would indulge me. So tonight, we had fifty-three participants on Zoom, which is excellent. And I know that it was a discussion by the governor when this very first was allowed as to the transparency of this process, but I think it's been great, and I hope it's something that she will take into consideration as something maybe we could continue because our ability to currently do electronic meetings ends on June the thirtieth. So to echo some comments of other city council members, we had several great events this weekend, starting with the tree planting on Mulan. I wanted to thank Cory Almas and Sean Ballantyne and the DPS for all their work making this tree planting a reality. When I first brought this grant application with relief to the Environmental Citizens Committee, we were originally planning on a much larger event to host a multicultural fundraiser for trees. We were going to engage the community, have this blog party, do all these great things, celebrate Arbor Day. However, COVID nineteen pretty much took care of that for us. So I'm very thankful to Holistic Industries and Alternative RX, who both stepped in and filled in this donation gap, this fundraising gap, with three thousand five hundred dollars each, making it possible to plant thirty-two trees. So if you get the opportunity, I would invite you to drive down Mulan, it's in the second block, and just see what a difference that that project made. Also, I want to thank Kevin Wright for organizing the prayer service and demonstration on Saturday. A special thank you to all the guest speakers, including our very own police chief Cory Haynes. I filled a couple of comments from residents who are a little bit confused as to why people are still protesting, given that the four Minnesota cops have been arrested. So the fact that they're baffled just brings me to the point that I wanted to give the answer that I have been giving to them, to the larger community tonight. So I will use a summarized version of the words by Scott Wood. Racism is bigger than a conscious hate. Racism is a complex system of social and political levers and pulleys set up generations ago to continue to work on behalf of the majority against the minority, whether we know, like it, or not. Racism is a cultural disease. Racism can look like hate, but it also looks like privilege, access, ignorance, and apathy. There's not a cure-all or anti-racist class you can zip in and take. Arresting the cops didn't resolve the underlying issue here. The problem is ingrained in our system of economic funding for schools, social programs, and cultural values. It is something that's fired up every time we interact with the world and something that we have to knowingly acknowledge exists in order to change every day. It is time that this change is long overdue, and it will take sustained effort from all of us. The city of Madison Heights, as an organization, including our police department, supports this change, and we invite you to join us to make a difference together. Next, I know that you heard about the program that we're offering through MISHDA called the Neighborhood Enhancement Program. The approved area that you heard in the council agenda was south of eleven mile, north of six ninety-six. And on May the twenty-ninth, we mailed out letters to homeowners in that designated area. Now, maybe if you're in that area and you think you're low income and you didn't receive it, maybe you tossed it out with your junk mail, and you think that you are interested and that you are able to apply, please reach out to us, call the city manager's office, or call the CED department. You can call the general city hall number. We are working, even though we're not open to the public until Monday. And the telephone number is two four eight five eight eight one two zero zero. The deadline for applying is June the nineteenth, and that's a hard deadline because the project got delayed due to COVID, but we have to have the entire project complete by the end of fall. So please reach out to us if you think that you are eligible for that. Next, are the COVID nineteen reopenings. City Hall will be reopening to the public on Monday, June the fifteenth. The library will begin curbside service on Monday, June the fifteenth, and we ask that all residents, business owners, and contractors observe all social distancing recommendations, including wearing masks when you're in our facilities. On behalf of the city employees who are working hard during this pandemic, I want to thank you all for your cooperation. And last but not least, I want to wish congratulations to Brian on his appointment for Judge Hazel Park Division of the Forty-third District Court. It's been inspiring to watch someone's goals actually become reality, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. Next, we'll invite our city clerk, Cheryl Ratman. Do you have any closing comments?
Yes, thank you, your honor. I just want to thank you for your service to the community. It was a pleasure sitting next to you on bias. I appreciate all the help and support you give to all the city staff, including the clerk's office, and wish you the best of luck in this career move for you. You'll be a great judge. I just want to remind everybody that the permanent absentee ballot applications have gone out on the city. You should have yours in your mailbox. Please note that those are a dual application. So if you fill it out in select vote elections, you're all set for August and also for November. We should be, we anticipate getting our ballots and mailing them out by the end of the month. I will update you as that that reality approaches. And if anybody is interested in working in the election, please feel free to contact our office. You can either fill out an application online or call us and tell us you're interested in working. We are looking for workers, especially for November, where we anticipate some of our usual workers may not be working due to the pandemic. So again, if you want to help with ensuring democracy, please call our office, and we'd be happy to employ you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd invite any closing comments from our mayor pro tem, Rosalind Grassi.
Thank you, your honor. Your honor, Mayor Hartwell. I just want to echo a few things that have already been said. I just want to make note on the trees. So three, four years ago, before I was on council, I went for a walk with someone through the nature center, and we turned down onto Mulan, and my friend said to me, what do you see? And I looked and I said, it's not what I see. I don't see any trees. There were no trees. And I said, this isn't right. We need to do something. And the city did come up with a program. So now, if a tree is taken because of construction, it is replaced. But my house, ten-ish years ago, trees were taken and they weren't replaced. That was the responsibility of the homeowner. And so I started looking at what can we do, rebooted the ECC, I made calls, what can we do, what can we do? And last year, about a year ago, probably more than a year ago, we had a presentation from Relief, and one of their board members happened to be Emily Rorback. And so she's been involved with this specific program for the last year, and we were going to do this in April, and then May, and then June. And I don't know about anybody else, but I kept waiting on Friday afternoon for the call saying, oh, no, we're not going to do it because. So I was quite happy that we were able to do it. My husband and I had actually planted a tree. Mayor Hartwell got a few seedlings a couple of years ago. So my husband and I planted one of those on Mulan. The mayor and I planted one over by Monroe Park, but my husband and I planted one on Mulan. So we checked it out on the weekend when we were there. And so I just want to thank everybody who was involved in that, Sean Ballantyne, Cory Almas, the volunteers, both those who live there and those who do not, and Chris Melencup, and other members of the men's club who joined in. That was that was great. I really appreciate that everybody did that. And I'm hoping that there's other things like that that we can do. It really, it just took a few hours of our time. So I'm hoping there's other things that we can do to bring trees to other areas. And it was something that we have been talking about. But again, because of COVID, so many things have just been put on hold. That was how we spent the first part of our morning. And then we had at noon the rally. And one of the greatest things about that was that Councilman Corbett and Councilman Saltus were not able to be there physically. The rest of council was able to go. We all had masks. We were all very aware of where we were standing. But Councilman Corbett and Councilman Saltus contacted the organizer that day, the morning of, whenever it was, and just said, you know, I'm sorry, I have a previous engagement. I can't make it, but I support this. I thought that really spoke volumes because there are so many different things that happen in the city, and one or two people may come and one or two council members, maybe three council members, or yeah, okay, whatever, maybe I'm interested. We all have what I would call our pet projects and things that are a bit more important to us than other things. And this is something that every single member of council said, you know what, this is important, and I can't make it. I there's a reason I can't actually go, but it's important enough that I'm going to make a call so that the organizer knows I'm not just blowing this off. So I want to thank Councilman Corbett and Councilman Saltus for doing that. You easily could have said, oh, I'm not coming, and just moved on. So thank you for for doing that. And Mr. Bliss made a comment about having some kind of task force, and I've spoken to a few other people about this. After the meeting, I was speaking, I spoke to one of the speakers, and one of the things we talked about was the implicit bias. And Mrs. Marsh sort of touched on it. I don't know if she used that term, but implicit bias is basically what you grow up with and what you know. And we all have some kind of implicit bias. And we don't realize that. It doesn't make us bad people, but we all have it. And we need to educate ourselves. We need to educate other people. And we need to say, you know what? I didn't realize that. And now I need to change how I do this. And it's hard. It's hard to change how you think. We have, you know, I come from a banking industry, and less than twenty percent of leaders in the banking industry are minorities or are women. And so it's really hard when you go into that situation. And so many, they call it the C office, you know, so many corporations, we don't have that. So I think it's really important that we show our diversity, that we show good role models for all our children. It's not just important that children of color have these role models. It's important that everyone does. So I'm glad that we're doing something. I think the conversation has started, and we need to move on. Whether it's a task force, we have to decide how that's going to, how that's going to work. But I think we need to move on. So I appreciate that everybody on council took the time to be involved in that. And I appreciate that staff, you know, I had asked last meeting that we do something, you know, maybe opening up patios, allowing more seats. So I appreciate that. Boom. Next meeting, it was done. So often bureaucracy takes time. So thank you, staff, for doing it. Next meeting, I really couldn't have asked for it any quicker. I do appreciate that. And I asked that as our residents and people who come to the city do come to our restaurants, that they still, you know, maintain and be respectful of other people. Everyone is dealing with how they are reopening their businesses, their homes, and their lives in their own way. So be respectful. Our parks are open, but not everyone is comfortable going there. Respect that. And when you are there, respect the people there, maybe very anxious. So just, you know, you need to play it by ear as you're going along. But I just want everybody to do what's comfortable for you. And so I want to say thank you to that. Mayor Hartwell, I again, I wish you luck. I don't know that you would ever need advice from me, but you know, I'm here if you need it. I hope that you are there when we, when we need advice. I know one of, I wouldn't have gotten through my first two and a half years if I didn't have you and other council people to bounce ideas off, whether they were in the city, in our neighboring cities, or just elsewhere. So I hope you have judges that you can bounce ideas off. But you know, you are always welcome in City Hall. And if you ever need it, you can have your wrench. You can borrow the wrench that you gave me as a tool at the State of the Cities. One of the last functions, one of the last events that we did pre-COVID was the State of the Cities. It was my third or fourth. I can't remember now because I know I went to one or two before I was on council, but I know I've gone every year since I've been on council. But it was the first time that the mayor, in the middle of his speech, ended something to the pro tem as a tool. So I have this if you need to borrow it. Thank you and good luck.
Thanks for making me laugh. Next, I'd invite closing comments from Councilwoman Kim Clark.
Yes, thank you so much. So yes, the protests over the past couple of weeks have been great. Sorry, my wants to be star of the show now. But Kevin Wright, who was the organizer of both of those protests, made a good point that the time for symbolism is now over and now it's time to take action. And I agree with that. And that's why I've been really been pushing the Don't Forget to Vote campaign to reach out to some of our young adult voters and not only make sure that they are getting out to the polls, but that they understand the whole impact that their vote has. If there's anyone here on city council who knows how important your vote is, it's Bob Corbett and I because we both won our seats by three votes. So I want to really impress that upon our residents. So what I want to do is kind of go over, there's a couple of our young residents who are hosting some events coming up here, and one of the biggest ones is Micah Cooper. I was first introduced to Micah Cooper at a talent show when he had a piano fall on his leg, and I jumped into action and had to lift that piano off of his leg very quickly. And I don't know where I found the strength, but I did. But I've got to watch Micah grow through middle school. He went to school with my children. And listening to him speak passionately about what he's passionate about is just completely overwhelming. And I got a chance to watch Micah and some of his peers speak at a soapbox competition for Lambier Schools. And as this is all developing in our city, Micah took it upon himself to organize his own event called the Project Double O Seven. And it's a speech rally that encourages young adults and high schoolers to come out and speak their mind about what's going on in their communities, what they'd like to see done, and how they might want to get involved. So this event, Micah is hosting at City Hall, just like the last two protests were. And it is going to be on June twentieth, and it starts at noon. He says, hello, I'm holding a recurring speech rally event called Project Double O Seven. Here is where teenagers and young adults alike may speak on various justices and let their voices be heard. Many people have felt hopeless during this time of turmoil. Well, no more. I will hold rallies with a small group of people I call the committee, and we will organize these events. The coming up Project Double O Seven will be will be on the injustices against Black and Brown peoples by the United States of America. We will organize it West Thirteen Mile Road on the front corner entrance at Lambier High. There will be no violence tolerated, and people who attend are encouraged to challenge and challenge and expand on the participants' ideas once they are finished presenting. This is an incredibly mature move for someone like Micah Cooper, who is going into the 11th grade in high school. Not only do I think all of our leadership should be supporting this event and getting behind Micah, but I'd like to see school leaders and other community leaders jump in and respond to. And I'd like to see adults show up, but to not speak. I'd like to have them there and just listen to what it is the youth in our community has to say. I think it's important. And I think that they lend very good opinions as to how we can address our policies in the future. And on that note, we actually also started a group with Kevin Wright and some other some other members of the community from these protests to start putting town halls together so that we can get the community together to address some of the disparities that we're going through, come up with ideas of how we can bring solutions to the table and work with city leaders to try and get them implemented. So we have city leaders from all walks coming and we'd love to see more residents get involved in that too. So keep an eye on Facebook. You'll hear more about that as that goes on. But it's true that the time for symbolism is over. There are a lot of disparities in our city that need to be addressed. Madison Heights Food Pantry is a grassroots organization that jumped into action to feed our community when we knew that they were going to be facing challenges because most people were going to be laid off of work. This is great that the community is doing this, but our city should have some of these safety nets put in as well, so that we don't have to face these times of crisis when things get bad for our residents. I find that for more supportive of each other, that our city becomes stronger. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to miss you very much. I wouldn't be where I am today without you. Proud of you and your polls. I'm grateful for you and your family. Thank you for being a part of my life and good luck to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Councilman David Saltis, any closing remarks?
Thank you, your honor. Again, good luck to you. Hate to see you go, but I understand, of course. Also, I want to assure the residents that our officers, our police officers are not like the ones that are committing those racist tragedies. We have officers that we give commendations to for saving lives. Our officers, our men and women save lives in our city. And for the fact that we have that special investigations unit where we pretty much eradicated all the human trafficking that were in our hotels. And I think it's under a great deal because of our chief of police and his leadership. I also want to see if I can, I don't know if I need a second motion, but I'd like to ask the city attorneys to write an ordinance that bans the conversion therapy. And I know we talked about that before, but I was hoping that we could bring that to the table. And so I request that the legal counsel write that ordinance for us. And do I need a second on that, sir?
Mr. Mayor, you've got one, David.
Yeah, I second.
I think you have
I second.
Broad support on that, Mr. Saltis. Thank you.
And that's all, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, thank you to everyone's kind remarks. I hope you get the same amount of joy and fulfillment that I've received from public service. We need more elected leaders like the men and women on our city council and on our staff. The city council needs to nurture our employees who've devoted their careers to taking care of our residents. Forever, forever be focused on doing good deeds, having good thoughts and saying good words. Thank you for your time. The meeting's adjourned.